Today, the discussion about moving the fairgrounds to rest for a period of time. And so I guess that's why we're here and have supporters here. We want to protect our gathering place and make some improvements. So I hope we have a productive day that way. The other thing I want to comment on is I see on the agenda, the reason I'm making comments now is because you have an executive session planned. Looking at that, and I've been involved with the statutes and read those, and I don't see where you have the reason for an executive session. The document that we're talking about today, and including some slight changes, you're in the changes in the MOU we're talking about, deal with state statute, and it's just a little wording change. So I don't see where that excuse about documents the public can't see. And then you also cite the imminent litigation, which, as far as I know, nobody knows about any litigation that we're facing on this subject. So, anyway, that's my comments on that, and hopefully we have a positive outcome today. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Ron?
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Hartman for the record. Topic is also the fairground. The Commissioners have been reviewing a long-term agreement with the county fairground all year, if not longer. There have been town hall meetings this year on the county fairgrounds. The people made it clear they want the fairgrounds to stay at the current, in the current location. The fairground manager has provided to the Commissioners a professional business model. The business model included gross revenues, money spent in our community by people attending the county fair events, showed the fair operates a year-round business and not just the state fair in August each year, state fair attendance numbers, number of people employed, a ten-year investment growth plan broken down year by year for new and remodeled facilities. The fairground does not cost the taxpayers one penny. They are self-funded. The county Commissioners have spent money to build a new justice center, purchased the Cootney Electric Building, put a new roof on it, new HVAC system, and remodeled for the Sheriff's Department, new location. They've approved funds to finish additional jailpods. It no longer makes sense for plans to consolidate all the county offices in one location like at the fairgrounds. It is now time for the Commissioners to approve or not approve a long-term agreement with the fairgrounds. I recommend this vote be placed on next Tuesday's Commissioner Business Meeting. Commissioner Brooks, I think you would want this to be one of your last acts before leaving office. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Commissioners, my name's Fred Marcarien, and I'm here in support of keeping the fairgrounds in the place that it is. I really located from California 10 years ago. My mission was to not only protect the way of life here, but to do what I could in that pursuit. I've been associated with the fairgrounds for almost eight years as a volunteer. I've met people in the fair administration, rodeo committees, and I've seen firsthand of the amount of events that go on there. I have participated in Junior Rodeo. I participated in Farm to Table, where 1,800 kids went through my ranch spot to show them ranching, and I bucked 1,800 kids on a little bucking machine, and the kids got to rope and everything. Who's going to tell these kids that there is no place for them to go, that they're going to have to go to a new location? You know, this fair, and I've seen it firsthand where I'm from, this is called the gem state. This is Cootney County's gem. This is like analogy of Central Park in New York. This is right in the middle of this area, giving access to people who would know, would not be able to get access if the fair property was moved. I talked to a gentleman in a wheelchair, lived about four blocks away, and that's how he gets to the fair, back and forth that way. And how would he get to a new location? And I think what you're doing here, and I have respect for what you guys think is right and stuff, but if you sat down and looked or participated in Farm to Table, see the kids, I mean, we're, this is, affects future generations. What kind of legacy do you want to leave that? Do you want to give up this gem, move it somewhere else, and try to figure out how you're going to now get 1,800 kids a year that go to Farm to Table? Not only them, the 4-H clubs, the Junior Rodeo, this is all about the kids. This isn't about me. This isn't about the people who actually, you know, are older like me and stuff like that. This is about our future generation. I think that the Commissioners should actually go and experience what these kids actually, how they benefit from this. And for somebody who is just a volunteer, I'm there every day and stuff for all the events that we have, and my two favorite events are Farm to Table and Junior Rodeo, because I believe that the kids in this county deserve a place to go, not only to the fair, but to be able to enrich their lives. I don't know how many kids that went, came through that I was able to talk to who don't have that opportunity to see what actually goes on in Cootney County as far as ag-related, 4-H-related, just regular stuff that's beneficial to them. And it seems to me that moving this fairgrounds and stuff, a place that actually is self-sufficient, which you don't find that, you don't find that. I can guarantee you, it doesn't happen where I came from, and very few places will actually have that kind of track record. And so I hope that in coming up here and speaking, and like I said, this is for future generations and stuff, take that into consideration. How do you want the future to look? Do you want to have a nice fairgrounds meeting place, places for kids and stuff to go to? Or do you want to just tear it up, put a bunch of buildings on it, and ship the fairgrounds out somewhere else, making it so hard for these people who have limited access, limited resources? Some of these kids don't even have the opportunity to go to the fairgrounds, to learn what's going on, for the sheer fact that they just aren't given it to them. And you want to eliminate that? I think that's wrong. I'm in total support of leaving the fairgrounds where it's at, and I hope you take what I have to say into consideration, okay?
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
All right. Any other public comment?
There is a little bit late parking. My name is Dave Paul, and I've spoken here a few times with regards to the fairgrounds, but Post Falls, Idaho, wrote some things down just so I can stay kind of on track with where I want to go here. But just a quick background on me, I'm a 30-year Cootney County resident, 44 years in the ag industry, active volunteer in the community, including serving over 13 years on the Post Falls School Board, chairman of the Post Falls School Board, National Future Farmers of America Board of Directors, and 20 years as a volunteer at the fairgrounds, current rodeo committee chair, just to name a few, you know, in the local community. As you guys know, and everybody in here knows, our fairgrounds is historic, with the fair starting over 100 years ago, and it being at its current location since the 1950s. In 1935, for instance, the county Commissioners believed in the importance of a fair and a fairgrounds, and levied to raise money for fair purposes. Even back in the early 1900s, county Commissioners understood the importance of a fair and a fairground. This is the community's fairgrounds. It's not your fairgrounds, it's not my fairgrounds, it's, you know, it's the community's fairgrounds. 4-H and FFA, rodeos, horse shows, livestock shows, Farm to Table, as Fred mentioned, Home and Garden Shows, the list goes on and on and on. Something's going on at the fairgrounds every day, all year long. So my point in my comments today is to encourage you to sign a memorandum of understanding for the fairground. You have to understand how difficult it is as a volunteer at the fairgrounds in assisting Jerry and the fair board with planning and those types of things, how hard it is without knowing what the future direction is for the fairground. Earlier this summer, I communicated with Commissioner Duncan and asked if you won't sign a long-term agreement to keep the fairgrounds in its current location, what's the plan? I remember the last meeting I was at, back in July or August here, where you guys talked consistently about transparency. It was emphasized transparency, transparency, transparency. If a long-term lease is not signed, what happens to the fairground? It's a really, really important question. We've all heard, we'll move it out to the prairie. Problem solved, move it out of town. Commissioner Duncan, in our email response, stated as well, what the Board of County Commissioners must do by Idaho state statute is provide property for the fair. Fair enough. Therefore, it's already within Idaho state law that the fair is protected. So what exactly does that mean? Find some land out in the prairie and the state statute is met? How would you propose the county would come up with the infrastructure and the building costs that would likely exceed $500 to $600 million to build the fairgrounds on bearland and actually have a fair? The fair would be gone, trust me. Our fairgrounds pays for itself and gets little and often nothing from the county. I'm sure you've read the economic impact studies that show just how important the fairgrounds is to our community and our county. Moving it in this economic environment simply is not an option. If the MOU isn't approved, I think the writing's on the wall. As Fred mentioned, do you guys really want to see the historic place demolished, become another subdivision, offices, or jail? I could assure you, our constituents do not. It's a prime location, as it should be. Our fairgrounds is a community gathering place and is way more important than money. In closing, I hope you appreciate our passion, my passion, for our fairgrounds. I desperately wanted to be there for my grandkids, the same memories that my two kids grew up with. Our fairgrounds is a gem in the center of town, a community gathering place. Since I moved here almost 30 years ago, we have lost most of the prairie. I live on the prairie. Let's not lose the fairgrounds. So I urge you, three county Commissioners, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide comments, but I urge you to vote in favor of this memorandum of understanding. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comment?
I'm Kevin Kirking. I serve in the fair board as well. My comment is really simple. It's just, I would just urge that the board consider that the property out there is not, not be looked at as simply property, but as a, as a community asset such as we've had with the, with other areas such as McEwen Field and various other things like that that become gems of, of our community. As a businessperson and have run and operated businesses over my entire career, I look at those kind of buildings that potentially could be proposed for that property out there that as overhead. We have to have them. All businesses need over, need those types of services that are provided there, but it's not what we live for. They provide us with the services we need so that we can enjoy our lives, and those types of assets that we have, like the fairgrounds, are the things we live for. So those are the comments that I would have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment? All right. Item one, justice building update with Director Voler and Mr. Mendez, please.
Good morning. David Mendez with Turner and Townsend here. I did not produce a new schedule for you on, on items of work. There are no new updates on that, other than today, this afternoon, you'll have that $48,000 courtroom AV pathway item to, to review and approve. Did you have any questions on that? I will be here this afternoon for that meeting if you do, but I wanted to prepare any, anything you might need as supplement to that. But we have coordinated between, so that's a coordination between the electrical contractor and the AV support that the county contracts directly. You approved that last week, and so that's the piece, the missing piece, is then coordination between those two, between those two contractors. I don't have an update for you on that item we discussed last week of the lighting fixture change. I'm still looking for the credit on that. But I do, with the added fireproofing that we've run into, that we've, we need, I will also probably need to extend the contract for the inspections. We have an inspector that, that ensures that we have proper fireproofing. They test the thicknesses of the applications, and so I'll probably have, I do have additional budget set aside in, in the soft costs for this project to cover those, those additional costs, so we're covered there as well. So are there any questions you have about the progress on the job?
No, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item two, KC North remodel update.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Voler, Director of Facilities for the record. I don't have a lot to update on Cootney North. Oh, sorry, where are jailpods, is that right?
Oh, no, Cootney North first.
Sorry, I didn't have that order on that. Okay. Again, not a lot to update on that one. The glass is shipping the end of November. That's the safety glass for the entry lobby. That's really kind of the holdup right now, so we can't do a lot more on that entry lobby until that glass comes, but it is scheduled to ship out the end of this month, so we can continue to move forward once we receive that glass. The software's been ordered for the fuel station to bring that online. We were able to walk the facility with our insurance agent and the workers' comp representative that we use. There will be some recommendations for some future considerations, mainly in the rec safety, backcountry and marine area, where there's some big drop-offs with, without railings, so that's probably something we want to keep on the radar for a future project that won't be part of, you know, this budget of what we're doing now, but probably an area we should look at securing for, from a safety standpoint in the near future. Short of that, Tom and his maintenance team are working on the evidence rooms to facilitate that transition, to bring evidence over there, and then we are working on a updated project budget that we plan to bring you next week.
Great. All right. Any questions on that?
No, thanks.
My only question is, when do we expect it to be open to the public?
I mean, there, that would be a question for the Sheriff's Department. I know they're transitioning, you know, as they go, and they're probably once we really get the lobby open, so that would be, once we get the glass in November, you know, December we'll be installing that and getting the administration moved over there, so probably right around the first of the year would be my assumption on that.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Item three, jail pod project update.
Again, not a lot to update with the jail pod project. Really, Sletton and the design team are working on the drawings, and so, you know, that's kind of the, the work that they're doing kind of on their own. We expect to have the 90%, 95% drawings for our final review by mid-December, so we won't have a lot to update on from the design standpoint, and I don't anticipate a lot of changes with that because the structure was really set with the 50% drawings. A little bit of good news, and this will be on your business meeting for approval this afternoon, but in a contract review, we did notice that the contract said that the builder's fee was supposed to be a 5.5% fee, and they had it listed as a 6% fee, so there's actually about a $35,000 credit that will be coming to the job, and so the formality is for your approval this afternoon, but just a little briefing on that of what's to come, so a little savings there.
Okay, questions?
No questions, thank you.
Do we want to just let Jeff put it back on the agenda when he has an update, or do you want it every other week?
Well, if there is nothing to really update us on, there's no point in having it, so I agree with that.
Yeah, I'll keep that on the radar, and when I see something coming up that I know we should brief you on, I will bring that up.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Item four, fourth quarter quarterly financial statement presentation with Finance Director Brandy Falcon.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brandy Falcon for the record. I just wanted to briefly present the county's fourth quarter quarterly report. We're required, required to do these by statute, and it is posted on the county's website at the end of every quarter when it is completed. Since this is the fourth quarter, which is the end of the fiscal year, we have a disclaimer that this report gets published before we're finished wrapping up the prior year, so these figures could fluctuate if you compare these to our final issued audited financials that come out in the spring. So I'll start on page one. This is just a summary of all of the electeds and their budgets in total. So far, no elected is showing as over budget for FY '24, which is a good sign. I'm going to skip all the way to page 25. All the pages in between are just breakdowns of each individual elected. So on page 25, I wanted to point out, this is a summary of all of our non-property tax revenues by fund. You can see that we budgeted $120,937,000, and we collected $120,420,000. So right now, we're showing under collection of $516,000, but at the time this report was compiled, we still had not posted our large revenue accrual entry for FY '24, which means about a month and a half of money that comes in after the fiscal year ends gets moved back into the prior year. So we will, once that gets posted today, actually, we will be in the positive at equal, actually a little over collected for our non-property tax revenues. Going to page 28, this is a chart that shows year-to-date change in fund balances for all of our funds. And again, like this can, this will fluctuate a little bit when we post the remainder of our adjustments, but I wanted to point out Fund 14 is showing a $2 million reduction in our health insurance fund balance. That'll decrease slightly, but that's primarily due to higher claims, loss on claims over this past year, which I know Alliant has already discussed with the board this past summer with their budget presentations to you. And then Fund 30, the airport, I did want to point out their fund balance has decreased by $855,000. That's primarily due to the tower project that they have used their fund balance for, as well as using their fund balance for grant match. They had a couple of grants that were overspent at the end of FY '24, so those over expenditures have to be pulled from their fund balance as of 9/30, and we've talked with the airport director, and we will continue monitoring that. On page 29, this is a chart of some of our more significant revenues for the year, so starting at the top with state revenue sharing. At the time we compiled this report, we hadn't yet received our last payment from the state of Idaho for revenue sharing. We've since received it, and we'll be moving it back to FY '24, but I can tell you, we'll be about $9,900 under collected on revenue sharing. Going down to sales tax, same thing. We've, we've since received our last payment, and we'll be about $9,200 under collected on sales tax. And then liquor, we apportionment from the state, we are $102,000 under collected on that for the year. So I feel like that further solidifies that for the FY '25 budget, we did not increase those budgeted revenues because we knew that we were going to be seeing some losses in these lines. In terms of our interest, we budgeted $4 million, but we collected 8.4 million, so we have over collection of $4.4 million there. And then we also have a unrealized market gain of $2.5 million on our investments. So overall, I think those are good numbers, and that will be good for our fund balance. And then going to page 30, the bright green sheets, this is a summary of all the various over-budget items that we've had, and I'm not going to go through every single one, I'll just touch on a couple of them. So on page 30, letter C, again, that's the health insurance fund, over budget primarily by claims exceeding what we expected. We have several for the airport. Just in general, the airport did go over budget this year in a couple different areas, again, reflecting in that $855,000 loss to their fund balance. Going to page 31, I just wanted to point out the auditor personnel is showing as over budget. That is because we had three employees leave this year, and when employees terminate, you have to pay them out their vacation that they have accrued, so those vacation payouts is the reason the auditor's A budget is showing is over. Page 32, 911, A budget did go over. We had written in there unbudgeted hiring bonuses, but that should actually be unbudgeted retention bonuses. So we do have the payouts of their retention bonuses, you know, overtime going over, primarily due to the new matrix the board approved mid-year during FY '24 contributed to that going over. Patrol, you'll see that their capital budget is over by $600,000. That is for the new fleet of 10 cars that the board approved to be ordered, and the payments for radios, cameras, and something else I can't remember, came due in FY '24. So we paid it in FY '24, and then in FY '25, we reduced the patrol C budget by that amount and put it back into fund balance. So we're reimbursing our fund balance for the amounts that came due in FY '24, if that makes sense. And that's something that the board was made aware of during budget season as well. Page 33, on why, the jail did go over budget on personnel, primarily due to overtime. Yeah, not much else to say there, just lots of overtime. And I believe we approved the detention matrix mid-year as well, so that would have contributed to that over budget. And then we have many, all of the district court judges' budgets are over, just primarily due to court-ordered mental health testing and drug testing and legal services. Those are all the highlights I had for this quarterly report. Does the board have any questions?
Questions, Bill? Okay.
Well, it looks like we're doing a good job on budgeting for our revenues, for the most part.
I think we are.
The airport, I'm just curious, do we have any outstanding payments to be received on any of the grants? Because sometimes I think we use fund balance to pay the contractors, and then we get reimbursed later.
So at, at year-end, yes, we have what's called pre-grant expenditures. So if they've spent money on a project that hasn't yet been awarded by the FAA, we have to pay those expenses from their fund balance.
Yes.
If a grant has been awarded, we do pay all of the expenditures out of the grant, and at year-end, we actually do adjustments. We book grant receivables. So really, the only ones that are coming from fund balance is the grants that haven't been awarded yet and grants that they've overspent, and they're waiting on a new award amendment from the FAA or ITD. So there, the ones that have been awarded already, those aren't coming from their So there, the ones that have been awarded already, those aren't coming from their fund balance.
Okay, so there is potential for a receivable there, a grant receivable.
Yes, there are, we do book significant receivables at year-end.
Okay, and then it seems like our biggest buffer was our interest in investments. So, moving forward, what would you recommend? Because I don't think we're going to have that same buffer moving forward.
Every year.
And do you have any recommendations for this board?
I think that we did a really good job of budgeting those state revenues to be within ten thousand dollars on many millions of dollars. It's pretty good. So I think that being conservative, like we have been, and we did a good job for the FY twenty-five fiscal year as well, is key. And then communicating with the treasurer, because he's the one that makes the decision on what to budget for interest. So my recommendation is to continue to be vigilant, like we have been during the budget cycle, and having a lot of discussions around those revenues. And we've done a good job levying one-time costs to kind of offset the fact that we won't always have that interest revenue come back to us like that, so.
Okay.
As well as, I mean, analyzing fees every year for fee-earning departments is also really important.
Sure.
And the biggest thing that bloats the budget is new positions. That is the most expensive thing you can add to the budget, is adding new FTEs. So monitoring mid-year changes is really crucial, and I think the biggest area that that can happen is the HR meetings.
Yeah, okay, so focus on the mid-year changes.
Yes, if I had my way, there would be no mid-year changes, because that makes the budget more confusing for people.
Sure, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, item five, advisory board applications. Sarah, go ahead.
Sarah Masters for the record. In your packets, you'll find different spreadsheets with the applicant's information for each of your advisory boards. Staff is prepared to assist with scheduling interviews or moving forward with appointments based on your recommendations. If you would like, we could just go through one by one, maybe starting with airport, and you can let me know who you might be interested in interviewing.
For airport, I'm fine with the reappointment of Steve and Anderson, and then I would probably recommend Phil Cummings for the second open, but I'm willing to interview if somebody else has a preference.
I think, at the very least, probably interview Patrick O'Halloran.
Okay.
He's been in the community for a while.
Yep.
Second for that one?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Do you want to go on?
So what I have is an appointment for Stephen Anderson. I have two people in favor of interviewing Patrick O'Halloran, and that's it.
Right, so are you good with moving Anderson forward, or you want to wait until the interviews are done?
I'd like to wait until the interviews are done. I mean, you know, there's a couple of ways of looking at it. One is, you know, we can keep the board rather static. I like to see a little bit of change on these boards. I'm not averse to Phil Cummings at all, but I think it would be good to at least interview Patrick and then decide the final two there.
Okay. All right, any opinions on that, Bill?
No, I think that's fine.
Okay, so I'll schedule interviews with Patrick and Philip.
Do we need to interview Phil?
No, I don't need to, I know Phil.
Okay.
Okay, we're skipping planning and zoning.
So with planning and zoning, we didn't receive very many applications. Jonathan put out another notice requesting people apply.
Okay.
Yeah, I kind of think that if we don't have an excess of applicants, we should try to at least extend these deadlines a little bit to try to get some additional applications. If all we have are four applicants for four vacancies, and we've tried our best to get applicants, then, you know, that's fine. But we still have some time before the end of the year, and I'm okay if we could extend this to at least, you know, right before Thanksgiving or the end of the week of Thanksgiving, and then we can look at these and, you know, move quickly on it.
Okay. And he has been posting it on Facebook, the Nextdoor app, it's on our website, so.
Okay, let's try. All right, Aqua for Protection.
Which one did we just do?
Planning and zoning, we talked about.
Okay, yeah, that's out of order on this.
Oh, I was looking at this sheet.
Yeah, I'm looking off of the...
I printed them in order that they are in your packet.
Okay, well, I put them in this order.
Whatever order you guys want to go in is fine, just let me know who you want to talk to.
All right, we're saying APDs next?
Okay.
Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yeah, I kind of feel the same one with APD, because we have, you know, same number of vacancies as applicants.
APD is a little bit different, though, and I would put it in the Community Guardian kind of slot, is they have to be in particular areas, like for instance, an engineer and agriculture, or a water representative. So with that, it's not easy to fill those spots at all. And I haven't heard any issue with the people who are serving on that, and it's a little bit a time-intensive board. So I don't think opening this one up is going to receive any more applicants, just because they have to fit into those specific areas.
Well, I totally appreciate that, and I don't disagree that, you know, if people are, you know, they bring some experience to the table, that they likely are going to be the candidate. But we do have time, and, I mean, I actually had someone call me up today and say, can I still apply for a board? So if we have the time, we might as well take advantage of. No one else applies, no harm, no foul. But if someone really good applies, at least we have that benefit. So I'm okay with waiting, I understand what you say, and I, and I agree with what you say, but we have the time.
Fair Advisory Board? That one's one of more of our popular boards, so there are three terms expiring, there's one vacant term, and eight candidates.
Bill, do you have thoughts on that? That was your liaison.
Yeah. I, I think it's right now.
Mike?
Sorry, thank you. One of the most important advisory boards, and that we have to be very open and very sensitive. And I would recommend that anybody who wants to be on the advisory board of the Fair be interviewed. I know it takes some time, but what we're dealing with is certainly worth the time.
So you want to interview the re-applicants as well?
Yeah, the only one I probably would not be interested in interviewing is the first one, just with a three-month residency. I don't really think that's here long enough.
Yep.
Well, that's easy to decide then, isn't it?
Yeah, just a little bit of time here in the community.
Okay, so that'd be seven interviews.
Yes.
Okay. So you guys are okay with interviewing all of them, yes?
Well, I don't need to interview the...
The first one.
The three, the first one or the three returning. I mean, I'm very familiar with them, so, but if two of the three, then we'll interview.
I think we have no issues that are facing us. It's not just the same as it was. So it's good, I mean, most of the people who are reapplying who want to be on, I happen to respect and agree with, but I still want to interview them.
I want to interview them all.
Okay, so I will schedule those. Guardians Advisory Board?
Probably going to Commissioner Duncan's comments that there is a specialization with these positions, but we have four openings and four applicants, and it would be nice to, you know, exhaust that option on applications.
So you want to redo that, like planning and zoning? Is that what you're saying?
Planning and zoning and Aqua for Protection District. Just keep it out there a little bit longer, and then we can make the final decisions.
Okay.
I mean, because the decisions, in essence, are already made if we don't get any more
Historic preservation, probably the same thing. The historic preservation?
Okay, thank you.
Same thing, two reappointments, two openings. So is that what you want to do?
Yeah, I mean, if we don't get any more applications, I don't even think we need to make much of a decision. It's, it's the foregone conclusion. Same thing with Natural Resources Advisory Board, two, two terms, two applicants.
Okay, noxious weeds?
Same thing. Three terms, three applicants.
And same with snowmobile, three applicants, three openings.
Okay, so...
Parks and waterways.
Okay.
Yeah, parks and waterways, four and four.
I'll set up the interviews that you guys have requested, and then we'll keep it open until the week before Thanksgiving?
We are doing the new agricultural board until the 13th.
I'm good through the end of the month, and then after that, let's make our decisions and move on.
Okay, okay, so we'll still have the agricultural board that you guys just approved?
On the 13th.
On the 13th.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right. With that, we have items six and seven, which are executive sessions. And I can call for more public comment at this point unless people want to stick around for, after the executive sessions. All right, I guess I would take a motion.
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seven-four dash two-zero-six-one-D, one-F, and one-B.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarre?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.